Call to order the Town of Sellersburg Regular Town Council Meeting for August 11th, 2025. Can I get a roll call, please? President. President.
President.
Here.
President.
Here. Will you all join me while Randy lead us in prayer and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Father God, we just welcome you to this room and to our meeting and thank you for being of power in the Town of Sellersburg. We just think you're anointing on each person here that has attended the meeting and our board. And Lord, just lead us as always and let us make diligent and smart decisions for our town. Just thank you for being a good and loving God. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
For the allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, in the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to amend or adopt the agenda as presented.
So move.
I have a first by Scott and a second by Matt. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four one, four zero Charlie. On the approval of minutes, you've all had an opportunity to look those over. They are also available online. Can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes? I have a motion by Scott, second by Matt. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four zero. I need an approval for the allowance claims.
So move.
I have a motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four zero Charlie. Comments from the public on agenda items. Does anyone sign in tonight? We have no public speakers tonight. Motion, we're going to appoint, I've spoken to this man myself. I think he's going to be a very good addition to our, to our board. Nathan Gibson. So I guess we need a motion to add Nathan to our unsafe building commission.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Matt.
I'll say.
A second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four zero. We have one ordinance tonight. And it's an ordinance to amend our cell phone policy. Basically, we have a team leader who is using her own phone and using it for town business. So we want to add her onto our cell phone policy at a cost of $50 a month. There's, I don't think there's really any reason why someone should be using their own personal phone for town business and not getting reimbursed for it. So do we have any discussion on this matter?
Uh, Chief, is it sergeants and above or just sergeants only?
And also the clerk treasurer, the deputy, the chief deputy clerk treasurer, the executive secretary, sergeants of the police department, billing office manager, billing coordinator shall all be reimbursed $50 a month for using their own cell phone plans.
That's a deal.
That is a deal. So do we have a motion to include? Is it the manager of the billing office, the manager of the billing office onto this, on this ordinance to add it to it? It's ordinance 2025 OR 017.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025 dash OR dash 017 as presented.
I have a motion by Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
I have a second by Randy. Do we have any further discussion? This ordinance supersedes any and all other previous ordinances that may be in effect and shall further be in full force and affect upon its passage. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four zero.
I'll wait for the second reading.
I have a motion to waive the second reading by Matt.
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four zero Charlie. On the second reading, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2025 OR dash 017 to add the manager of the billing coordinator to the $50 a month cell phone reimbursement? I have a motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four zero as well. Unfinished business, we have zero tonight. New business is NLC Service Line Warranty Program by HomeServe. I believe Charlie will tell, fill us in on this one.
Yeah, about two weeks ago, myself and clerk treasurer Michelle Miller both received a letter from AIM, which is Advanced Indiana Municipalities, the Association for Local Governments, informing us of an aging infrastructure program called the NLC Service Line Warranty Program. What this is, it's a third-party program. And before you, you have a slideshow that I shared with you at the last meeting. There's also a marketing agreement in behind that that our attorney Jake Elder has reviewed. Basically what this is, they will reach out to our users of water and sewer utility twice a year and solicit them to participate in a third-party program that basically warranties their service lines. There are several different levels of service that they can choose from. There's no cost to the town on this, to do this, but what it does is if you if you have roots in your lateral line between your house and the main, it would potentially be covered by this program. If you have a service line water leak from your meter to your house, it would be covered by this program. So for example, a lot of our sewers, we cover the sewer main, but the lateral line that connects to the main and to the house is on, is on the property owner. So for example, the councilman Langford, I think you're aware of one, there's a issue, if you have an issue, say where maybe the sewer lateral is separated from the main, that would be your responsibility to do that. Well, that's under the roadway. That would all be covered as part of the program if someone so chooses to participate. Again, it's not mandatory. It is by choice. Basically what they would do is they'd reach out to the program if they suspect they have a leak or an issue. And then they use, they use local contractors to address it. So high-level review there. I'm not really sure if you have any questions or anything about it. I sent this information out a bunch. Here's some other communities, Indiana partners that are in the program. There's probably 50 different ones on here, different communities that participate in it. Also in talking with Mike Chambers, who's the contact with this, this is the same program that local water and local MSU uses across the river. So again, pretty turnkey. Jake, do you have anything to add from the marketing agreement?
So I have a question. Would, would, would someone who say lives in the older part of town who has older lateral lines and whatever, would, would they pay more than someone who lives, it's all across the board?
Across the board.
Okay.
And I think they offer other service line programs as well. Like we're not gas, but I believe they offer like gas line stuff. They offer, you know, again, I think it's all turnkey and it really comes down to what the potential user is. I think at the end of the day, this is just an opportunity to provide this to our residents and our utility customers. Again, we don't, we don't manage it. We don't deal with anything with it. But again, by signing this marketing agreement and signing up with this company, it allows our users an opportunity and a choice to participate or not if they feel they need to.
Charlie, I'm looking at the term sheet, marketing agreement.
Which page?
And the very back page, Exhibit A, and I'm reading some of the interior plumbing, exterior sewer, exterior water service line. That's the only three offerings that are there. Do you know if?
You're welcome.
Someone looking for the post office. Sorry, go ahead.
Do you know if there, I read the sheet. Is there a deductible on this as well that you know about?
No. So again, for example, here the exterior service water line plan initially is $5.99 a month. That covers from the meter and our curb to the shut off inside the home, covers freezing thawed water lines, covers well service lines as well. Coverage cap, unlimited number of calls and $8,500 per call. Exterior sewer or septic line replacement issues, covers customer's responsibility from the external wall of the homes to sewer main. Cover septic lines if applicable, unlimited number of calls at $8,500 per occurrence. And then the interior plumbing is $15.99 a month, covers repair, replacement of following inside of the home. Blocked or leaking interior water supply or drainage pipes that carry fresh or drinkable water and wastewater. And then unlimited number of calls, $3,000 per call on that. So that's basically what they will, that's the plans that they provide. Yes, councilman McCallum, you have a question?
Randy, go ahead.
He'll probably ask what I'm gonna, go ahead.
Okay, I got a couple of questions. So it sounds to me like this NLC by HomeServe is sourcing people's information such as address, et cetera, et cetera, from the Town of Sellersburg. We're going to provide them, people's, our users, information.
Correct.
There's no agreement between HomeServe and the Town of Sellersburg, no monetary agreement. We're just advocating for this insurance policy protection, if you will.
There is a, there is a rev share that gets paid back to the town.
And how much is that?
10%.
10% of the yearly subscriptions to this?
10% of the fees actually received from members during the term under the plan sold under the agreement. And that if any discount, rebates, refunds charged by credits or sales or similar taxes occurred or paid by SLW in connection with the plan.
So, so we would generate, where would those funds that are, what, what line would they be put into? Hypothetically, where would those funds be in water or sewer depending on, depending on which plans are selected? And then is the only, because here's what I don't want to happen. I don't want the general public something to happen. Well, first of all, people need to be responsible for their own properties and understand the pipes and stuff that go into their house, that are in their house, everything's working and functioning. That's not, that's not the role of the government, okay? So very little people know that when there's a water leak in their home or one of the lines leading to their home off the street, it's their responsibility. They want to blame the town right off the bat. And then they incur all these charges and that's just not how that works. So I like the education portion of it from this company. I'm a little leery of selling, of granting people's information from us automatically. And then I guess people have a choice to say yes or no, right? Yes. All right. And those, these are, these are the rates, but again, I, I would hope people to do their research to understand, read the policies, read the agreements that they are going to enter into with this company, Home Serve. Because the last thing I want is them to come in and say, well, the town advocated for this program and one of my pipes busted and they don't want to cover it. And it's going to be our fault. That's what I'm worried about is, is this Home Serve going to take responsibility for an agreement that they enter into and it doesn't come back on the town like everything else in creation does, it seems.
And again, I wanted to, at the last meeting, I brought this up. I wanted to bring you the information. If you would like, I can bring Mike Chambers in from the company directly and come back at a future meeting if that's what you'd like to do. Again, I wanted to continue to build this presentation with you guys as far as something to make available to residents.
I'm not against it, but I like to punch holes, sorry.
Do you anticipate fielding calls about this from, from the public as far as I got a problem and they call us versus calling the service?
We get it all the time.
It already happens.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay.
Let me ask you, in your opinion, with your vast knowledge of water and sewer, what is the average, just ballpark, in your opinion, average person's knowledge of their properties, easements, water, sewer lines, what their responsibility is and what the government's responsibility is? What is the average knowledge, basic knowledge, would you say? Don't be bashful.
I will tell you that some people are very aware of it and other people don't have a clue.
I would say the percentage of other people is very, very.
Well, that, that may be, but some people are very aware of their property lines and where their water comes into their house and sewer line and so on and so forth. And the other people, it's just something they don't want to deal with.
It depends. I think generally low depending on the topic. I think everybody's experiences are different in what they've had to deal with as being a property owner, being a property owner isn't just mowing the grass unfortunately. That's why within the last mailer, I did a whole write-up about what is an easement. While it is your property, there are subservient users who are allowed to do certain things on your property within an easement. And that's why it's important to understand what easements are withheld on their property for different uses, whether it's general utility, sidewalks, stormwater, et cetera. We get calls a lot about, and I'm, again, you know, if you have a sewer lateral issue, it is expensive. It can be very, very expensive. We don't, we don't have a mechanism to direct people to have a solution to those other than to pay out of their pockets. There are items such as if you have a water leak, we do have stipulations in our ordinances as far as our rates where you will pay the water, but you, we will adjust your sewer. If there's a verified leak and you can provide certain levels of proof to that. Because obviously that water did not go down the sewer system. However, it did run through the meter, so you still have, you still have to pay for it, obviously. So again, you know, water leaks can be expensive, especially if they're in the home. I think it's pretty cut and dry if it's inside the home, if it's in the yard or different things. I think our billing office team does a pretty good job explaining that. Sewer's a little bit different. Again, you know, you run into sewer lateral issue and then it gets pretty expensive. And then when you have to start cutting up the roadway to get to your sewer lateral, it can get really expensive really quick. So that's not something you can necessarily do yourself. You have to call in a professional. I know there are riders on homeowner policies that cover certain things like that. Some people may or may not know that. Maybe they may or may not have that on their home, on their homeowner's insurance.
So potentially this could be a good thing for some homeowners.
I would think this would be a pretty good thing for most people. Especially if you live in a house that is older and the sewer lateral's never been addressed or replaced. There's a lot of clay tile in the Town of Sellersburg on sewer laterals and those are notorious. I think we have a councilman here who had to deal with that here very recently and he had to pay out of pocket quite a bit of money to address this clay tile sewer laterals.
What was that again? Clay tile?
Yeah, it's old clay tile.
Old clay tile.
Tree roots have a tendency of getting in the, in the joints of the.
So again, I think this would be, again, this is, it's not mandatory. It's, it's by choice.
But I, I just don't want to blow back on the town.
And I, and I agree. Again, I think by offering a program like this, the reason I like this one is basically because it is supported by the Indiana, the Advanced Indiana Municipalities, which is the membership organization of local governments in the state of Indiana.
Well, I'd like to talk to the gentleman.
Okay.
I noticed in their Indiana partnership, the only towns regionally in this area is the city of Evansville, which is two hours away. And the town of Palmyra, which that kind of, that's out of nowhere. You may want to let them know that it's spelled City of Sullivan around. If I lived in the town of Sullivan, I would be upset about that. If you're advocating for my behalf, but you can't spell my town name correctly.
I'll be sure to pass it along.
Pass it along.
To Mr. Chambers.
Tell them they're welcome.
So what do you need from us tonight? You just?
Now, so what I'm hearing is some of you would like Mr. Chambers to come to answer questions and do a more comprehensive review of this prior to consideration and I will get that arranged.
I got a question, Terry.
Okay, go ahead.
Charlie, since I think Charlie has the most information about this. There's three exhibits on the back, A, B, and C. One is plumbing and drainage plan and then sewer and septic and then there's water service line. If someone, and I added up the figures for those three, it comes to $36 a month. Roughly, maybe a few cents short. And I guess this question would be for, did you say Mr. Chambers? I wonder if you can buy parts or pieces or you have to buy comprehensively?
It's my understanding you can buy them individually.
You can buy them. Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Good, Randy?
Yep.
Any further questions on this subject? No. All right, moving forward, general comments from the public. If we have anybody who wants to speak tonight. We have a room full of people.
Mr. McDevitt, good to see you.
Okay.
It's been a while.
Staff reports. Charlie Smith, you're up first. Is Google's, is, is Google's not working?
Yeah, play off. You all right, Charlie?
Yeah, it's just, it's been a day. Obviously, we had the workshop prior to on the trash rate conversation. We'll be bringing that to the next council meeting. Parks orders tomorrow evening. Food truck Wednesday here at the end of the month. Be the last Wednesday of the month. I believe we have seven food trucks for opportunity there. I did release Chosen Good in the Town of Sellersburg presented the Second Annual Brass Rabbit, October 4th over here at Wharton Park. From nine to four, if you all recall, we had about 50 booths over there. Several thousand people attended that event. So we're looking forward to that. I believe that's also the same day as the town sponsored through Parks. Car show and street dance at the Legion.
I don't think they're doing the car show as of right now.
So, so the street dance at the Legion that evening. Sellersburg Celebrates is upon us. This weekend is the gala. They decided to do a gala instead of the luncheon. So Saturday evening is the gala. The seller, celebrate Sellersburg at the Montrose in Parkville.
I didn't get invited to that.
You will. All of you all are invited.
Randy, you want, you want to?
I'm finalizing ticket counts right now and stuff.
Would you dance with me, Randy?
Absolutely.
Who's leading?
Scott's the dancer. I'm just a follower.
Going back to my Dancing with the Stars.
What else you got, Charlie?
All right, I'll, I'll look forward to entertaining that off.
Do you have a date for the food trucks?
Last Wednesday.
The last Wednesday?
August 27.
August 27.
That's all I have right now.
I attended the last food trucks. I thought it was fantastic. And I also attended the last Brass Rabbit. I thought that was, that was a very good program as well. Okay, we're moving on. Mr. Adams, Matt Adams. Matt has nothing tonight, but I'm going to put him on the spot.
Chief, do you, uh, just asking, uh, everything good to police department? Is the town safe? Any major complaints or anything like that going on that I need to be aware of in my district? No vehicle break-ins, thefts, home invasions? Nothing? Outstanding.
Okay, school is back in session and we are doing the police car follow the school bus.
Very good.
And they're following buses to watch people who are violating the school? Any traffic laws around pickup and drop off?
Just stop arms on the buses and so on and so forth. People get, nowadays, I'm not, people get so involved in what they're doing and it's like they lose consciousness when they pass the school bus, so.
I don't see how.
It's a good, it's a good thing. Right. So just a reminder, everybody, school is back in session and there are police officers following the school buses. Right. Make sure everybody plays by the rules. All right. Safety, absolutely.
Appreciate you, Chief.
Engineering status updates by Mike Harris.
How come they took your name off the list? Charlie, is there a reason why Mr. Smith's name's not on the list? Oh, inconsistent, inconsistency, right? Mr. Harris?
Thank you. Thank you. Great to see you too. Sunflower Valley, we have got a few more easements, so 13 out of the 24 permanent, there's four houses we have not been able to reach the owner. The other, so there's 11 left. Seven are in some various stage. Some people had question, questions. Some people wanted changes made. Excuse me. But there's four we have not been able to get a hold of yet. We're going to actually attempt to go over this weekend. Knock on doors. We've been there in the morning. We've been there in the evening. Been there in the middle of the day.
So what do you do if you actually can't get in, get in touch with the owners?
That's a good question. Probably get with, I'm not with Jake. We'll get with Fifer and legally see what we need to do to move forward. My guess is we would end up sending a legal document that says you have so many days to take care of this or we're moving forward with it.
Marching in.
Okay, yeah. And we just gave IFA, they were asking about a, an update, so just gave that to them. So they're, they're ready to move forward with construction. Lead service line, so got through 2,800 meter pits. There's about 500 left. We've talked to IFA about pushing the deadline out just a little bit to go ahead and get the rest of those done. So that is, that is moving forward. 31, the, you approved at the, you approved the award, this is, this is worded incorrectly. You approved the bid award at the last meeting. We have the bid award documents. We just need to get them signed, not bringing them. You, you approved it at the last meeting, so I'll get either with you, Terry, or with Brad to get it, to get it signed.
Okay.
So that can move forward. Actually saw Bob Tally at another meeting today and told him that was coming. So he was, I don't know if excited is the word, but he was glad to hear that was, that was moving forward. Bob's with Indy.
Right, that's my name.
Is it?
I can tell there's a little extra bounce in his step.
He was happy. I'm, I'm, yeah, good. I made him happy. Actually, I made him mad and then I made him happy, so that's good. The PER and the AMP, the drinking water, still, still working with Charlie and Baker Tilly on that. Need to figure out if there's a, if there's a way forward. Let's see, Town Center Sewer, that's easement acquisition is just ongoing. So starting to, starting to reach out to those folks. So you may get, you may get some calls here shortly about, about that. I know some of the folks were here at a meeting, but not everybody. So you, you may get contacted. 31 wastewater, that's the, the same as the water. That's all in one contract. Ivy Tech, I believe the condemnation is proceeding along, getting closer to the end. Once that is done, then Mac will be on site to move forward with that. With that project, they're, they're waiting on that. They have to, typically they start at the low end of the sewer and that's the, the low end. So once that's done, then they'll, they'll blow through there pretty good. Get the, get the pipe in the ground. CCMG, so two projects there. The, I'm going to go in reverse order. 2025 dash one. That is just waiting on final payment to be made and then that'll all be closed out. Pretty simple. That was a small one. 2024 dash two, that was a bigger one. Mac is done with everything. They actually submitted their final pay application today. I think that's the email you said you got. And then we have a final quantity, final quantity adjusting change order, contract adjusting change order for that project. You can read through three pages of individual lines if you would like. These are just basically underruns on, on the quantities. These are just basically underruns on, on the quantities. Uh, the, the bottom line is, it is a deduct to the contract of $40,923.64. It's on, um, kind of the middle of page three of three. This is typical on these projects. When you get to the end, you reconcile what they, what they, um, built versus what was in the bid and they're always a little bit different.
So just to be clear, this is 40,000 coming back our way versus us paying it out?
Correct. Forty, 40,000 you're not spending.
Correct.
Yes, absolutely. So I would, um, ask for consideration of that to approve tonight, um, and then we can move forward. If, if you approve, then we'll move forward with getting the rest of the paperwork taken care of.
I'll make that motion. Motion by Matt, do I have a second?
I'm second.
Second by Randy, any further discussion on this matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four, Scott? Four zero. I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'll get a signed version after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Got a question about the Ivy Tech compensation, uh, in blue in the bottom line. What is a condemnation proceeding? I've never seen that. What, is that a court thing or are we in court or we are, what?
Yeah, go ahead.
So you all, you know, you certainly, you know, you can move forward. Uh, you can move forward taking easement. So, uh, you know, they provided, JTL provided us with, you know, a document, easement, legal description. We had to go out and get to appraisal list, we just got those back. Before the meeting, I was meeting with Mike to go over everything to make sure it's fully drafted. I'll be sending it out certified to the property owners here this week. Uh, it's about a 30-day process. They can either accept or deny, they deny, do a filing in court, file in court, you'll have to put proceeds up in escrow and we'll go through and at that, at that time, easement then becomes the town's and then you're arguing about the price. So that's, that's what it is. It's, you know, it's not something done very often here at the town and we can work property on it. It's their, it's their right and it's kind of what we're right.
Do you see it being reconciled anytime before 30 days or after 30 days or?
So we, I mean, I haven't had any communication. I have to follow the state statute. Once I send this letter, they may re-challenge, say, hey, we, alternatively, I may not hear anything and that will just possibly.
Go for it. I was just, I was just curious if it, you know, was in legal proceedings and it is. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
All good, Randy? Thank you, Mike.
I have a question.
Okay, we got a question.
Is it my understanding that the state has lowered their threshold, award threshold from, is it 150 million to 100 million? Did I see that somewhere? Does CCMG?
Uh, they lowered, sure, they, they did lower it, but yes.
So they lowered the allotment of money, um, for the state?
This is, this is the email you sent us, correct?
This is the email that sent you. So related to CCMG, they lowered the total dollar allotment annually and they're only doing one call for projects next year. Um, typically we would have, we would have already submitted because historically they'd been due by the end of July. Um, this call for next year is due by the end of October. Uh, they will not be awarded until next fiscal year, state fiscal year, so not awarded. We won't be able to proceed until July of next year, basically. And then they changed the amount, uh, where we were a 75, 25 community, meaning we would only pay 25% match. They've changed the match amounts to 80, 20. So now we will be paying 20% instead of 25.
But there's less funds available.
It will be more competitive for sure.
And I think they, I think they lowered the max an individual community could get.
They lowered the max. I think it was a million and a half, no, it's a million.
Yeah, it was a million and then they had raised it to a million and a half and then they lowered it back to a million.
Well, it's a good thing we got most of our stuff done last year.
That's right.
Um, so to address that, I've got a, I've got a meeting with Darby, uh, coming up to talk about, uh, our payback plans for next year with PISA ratings and some base failures and road maintenance pilots, um, to get the most out of it.
I was just curious. I thought I saw, read that somewhere.
Yep.
Doesn't feel very good.
Yeah, and they, they had announced a while back, they were making some changes to.
Good, Scott? All right. Moving forward, Jake Elder, town attorney.
The only thing that I have for you all to consider, uh, and I just would like to have it in the, in the meetings and for you all to take that. In the future, as in today, if there's ever a time the president is not here, previously you all have approved any type of legal document or ordinance or otherwise, allowing, authorizing the president to sign, I would like for you all to make sure that the vice president could also sign in that person's place. I don't know if we've ever officially made that motion, but I think it's probably just something to have if, if it's ever needed.
Do you need a motion for tonight's? Would you like one for tonight's?
If you don't, if you don't mind, just make that motion, we'll, we'll be good.
So I would motion for to allow the vice president, in lieu of the absence of the president of the town council, to sign whatever necessary documents or forms for tonight's meeting.
I have a motion by Scott, do I have a second? And a second by Matt. Any further discussion? All good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four zero.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Mr. Mobley.
Uh, I'd like to commend the Parks Board and Charlie and whoever's on the planning committee for the, uh, events that we've been having with the town. I went to the food truck, uh, Wednesday, a couple of weeks ago, I guess, and, uh, first one was, uh, not such a, a hit, but the second one seemed to be, uh, it was equally as hot. It just seems like people participated more and knew more about it, but, uh, seemed like it was success. Um, the, uh, Parks Board, uh, also we made a donation to the Sellersburg celebrates again this year and, uh, hopefully that thing, uh, goes off well. Uh, looking forward to it. I usually visit it every year and check it out and, uh, you know, it's a nice festival for town of Sellersburg. Um, outside of that, um, I guess the, uh, I think we discussed it a week ago, we're gonna keep the splash pad open until the end of the month, uh, for what, from two to six, I believe is the, yeah, so. I haven't been in it myself, but I took my grandson up the other day and, uh, it was, uh, he got wet, so. At any rate, um, just, um, things moving forward, uh, and I, I had a question for Charlie here with the Parks Board. Do we have a music event, uh, planned at all, uh, through the Parks Board? Working on it, so it's not, it's not final yet, but we're, I know we had one last year, uh, seemed like, uh, maybe we had two, I believe, uh, we had one. I thought we had a band outside of the, I know Tony played in one event. Street dance, okay. Yeah, but, uh, people have asked me about it and I said, I, I don't know a date, but, uh, um, anyway, uh, outside of that, I think the Parks Board, uh, did a really great job this year and, um, just, uh, wanna let them know that, uh, my appreciation for, for what they're doing and Charlie's contributions toward that board as well. But, uh, outside of that, I'm, I'm good. I think, um, I think, uh, like, uh, Terry had mentioned before, school's back in, you know, watch out for the buses and, uh, just try to be patient. That's all I have, Terry.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Scott?
Gentlemen. Couple of things, um, very crossing road is now completed, so my voicemail and text inboxes are basically empty of complaints for now. I'm sure that's subject to change at any moment, but it looks great, so they did a good job. I know some of that's ours and some of that's county, but, uh, I'm glad it's done and over with. The roadway looks, uh, very good. Um, that being said, I find that very few folks, maybe they, they lose track or, or maybe they just didn't fully comprehend, these Highway 60 in Bennettsville Road area in my district, uh, roundabouts are coming allegedly, right? Or is that, is that a done deal or where are they at with that? The state?
I don't have a date, uh, due to some funding stuff that's going on in the state, those projects are go, but they've been pushed, but I don't know till then.
So not anytime soon.
Initially, it was 2028, wasn't it, for the?
Fiscal year 28.
It was 28.
Fiscal year 29 now, I'm not sure.
What about the light at St. Joe East?
So I confirmed that today, that is coming. Um, they are going to string lights on the road that's there as a quote temporary solution until the 31 project is completed and then they're gonna come and construct lanes and redo the intersection completely. But there will be lights going up this fall.
And then, once they do the permanent lighting structure, they'll do St. Joe West, right? And synchronize those two lights together?
That is my understanding.
But we don't have a timeframe?
Uh, St. Joe West, not St. Joe East, there will be lights this fall.
Uh, budget preparations, budgets coming, we, we're, how we?
Michelle? She's working on it. Everything in line to be ready in October as, as usual?
I haven't reached the deals yet.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. I do have one member of my district that, uh, participated in the young ladies, uh, Little League Softball World Series team that finished runner-up. That's an incredible accomplishment to play on that stage, uh, so congratulations to them. They represented the state and their community very well, so very happy to see that. Um, do we have any police or equipment needs or are you including that in the budget? Do you, chief, do you have anything specific?
Chief, say.
Well, if there are certain.
Can I answer that?
If there's certain wants and needs, make sure you have that. Uh, I know, uh, throughout the course of the year, I talked to the chief and, you know, like, for the guys and girls that need this or that or like to have this or that, understand there's difference between wants and needs, so. And lastly, I'll continue to beat the drum on Senate Bill One, do we have any preparations budget-wise for how the impact to the town's going to be?
So, what do you think? I guess, uh, did you?
Okay. Um, I'm quite interested as to the impact. I have a, I have a theory and a guess, but, uh, that doesn't really help people, theories and guesses, um, but I, I would like to be prepared for when and if that impacts the town financially. Again, I'll say I'm very disappointed in the legislators up north that, uh, cities and towns such as ours would be impacted, but that's, uh, that's my.
Thank you, Scott. If, if Matt's done with his Charlie horse, I guess we'll move on to Matt.
I'm not saying I'm done with it yet, but, um, I just wanna thank all the town employees, uh, all of our, like, our police department, fire department. I saw that, uh, on Facebook track, Tri-Township dealt with quite a few fires today. Um, so, you know, I just wanna make sure that these guys are safe and everything that they do and kind of going off of what Scott said, that they're equipped with what they need. Um, that's our job as council to make sure that not only our police department has the services that they need, that they can serve the public with what they need. So it's a, it's definitely a two-step process, um, but there's a, an immense amount of thanks for everything that every, everybody does for this town, including this council and our treasurer, so. And then, kind of stole my thunder a little bit about the softball. Um, got blessed to watch the, you know, about half of the last game and, uh, the girls need to keep their heads up. They played very, 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 very good. Um, it was, uh, a blast to watch them play and, uh, I don't foresee that this is probably the last time that they'll be there. They got a good team, so. Representing the community well.
Awesome.
That's it.
All right. Uh, Charlie, uh, got an email this week that we received $280.02 for an opioid settlement distribution. Can you explain that for just, just a little bit? Are one of you?
So, um, through Attorney General Rakita's office, there was a settlement, uh, made with opioid manufacturers and there are restricted funds that we receive, uh, based on those settlements that can be utilized for certain things. That money typically will go to the police department. I think, uh, chief uses those typically for, um, some basic supplies and training for officers. Um, this latest disbursement, I think it's $208.
This is the very similar.
Yeah, so I think the most we've ever received in a year was $2,100.
So.
So, yes.
You must have all that money. Chief, you have, I mean, it was, uh, the shots, not lots, not lots.
Good. And you still have the drop boxes over there. People can drop off prescription medicines. Correct, correct. So if anybody needs to drop off any old medication that they just wanna get rid of, Monday through Friday, eight to four at the police station. Only other thing I have is it's really hot outside and I know people need to stay hydrated as far as our employees go, anybody. This, this humidity is really, really something else to deal with right now, so as far as you're outside cutting your grass, whatever, just make sure you stay hydrated and all of our employees as well. Uh, Michelle, do you have anything tonight?
Yeah, I did, um, oh, you.
So you were gonna bring it up anyway, weren't you? All right. Do we have anything else to talk about, guys? I'll take a, make, somebody make a motion to adjourn. So I have a motion by Matt to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Randy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
6:45 PM.